Excuse me, absolutely. I will start it off. Good evening and welcome to our September 14th Planning Commission meeting this evening. We are filming this live on Comcast Local 27 and on Pacific Coast TV's website. We do have a number of members of the community in attendance and you all do have the opportunity to speak this evening. The Planning Commission Chair will open and allow a general public comment session, which is on our agenda, as well as public comment for specific items on the agenda. During this time, you'll want to raise your hand, there's an icon, and/or if you're using a phone, star six to raise and unraise your hand, and star nine to mute and unmute yourself. You'll be given three minutes and there will be a timer. This evening or this afternoon, staff did email the Planning Commission, public comments, there are some public comments for one of the items this evening, as well as an item that's going to be spoken at the general portion of the public comment. Those are also posted on our website as well. We thank you for your patience still during on this remote meeting format. And I will now hand over this to Chair Reddick to officially begin this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Bridget. It's my pleasure to call to order the September 14th, 2021, meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Half Moon Bay. To begin, would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item, I'm sorry, next item is roll call.
And we do have Commissioner Benjamin Hernandez absent this evening. Commissioner Gorn?
Here, I'm here.
Vice Chair Polgar?
Here.
And Chair Reddick?
Here.
We have a quorum of three this evening.
Excellent. Brings us to consideration of the minutes of the Planning Commission's last meeting, which was August 24. Do Commissioners have any edits or comments on the minutes Bridget has shared?
I just have one typo on page three, second line from the bottom, it says, seems to be, seems to support Form PC, it should say from PC, so I will make that correction of from.
Excellent. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move, we approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Polgar?
Yes.
And Chair Reddick?
Yes.
Motion approved?
Minutes approved. The next item on our agenda, as with every Planning Commission meeting, is an opportunity for the public to give comment to the Commission on any items that the public chooses, with the exception of the two items that are on our agenda to be considered specifically very quickly, but if you'd like to make comment on anything beyond the agenda items, you're welcome to do so at this point.
So I currently have David Shore that would like to speak, and then if anybody still wants to raise their hand to speak, they can. I believe your mic is on, Dave, so you can begin and I will share screen.
Okay, is audio okay? Just want to check that first. I've had some bandwidth issues here at home.
Yes, we can hear you clearly.
Great, thanks. And Bridget has a document to be scrolled concurrently with my spoken comments here.
I just, like, yeah. Here, I'm just pulling it up, I just need, sorry. Okay, so everyone can see that? Okay.
Okay, thanks. I'll begin. Regarding the June 29 study session on the Hyatt Hotel project, as a member of the public, I am allowed three minutes to comment on a four-hour-long meeting. This while the applicant and his team of consultants have unlimited access to staff, AAC members, Planning Commission members, and city council members. Perhaps you can understand why the public may feel that the deck is stacked heavily in favor of the developer. The applicant absolutely has a right to develop this property, so long as development is consistent with principles, policies, and regulations of the city, which the applicant himself helped formulate while a member of the GPAC over several years. I understand the rules of the game, and the study session has said that no decisions are made, et cetera, et cetera. But a simple plain text reading of the city's LUP and its implementation within the municipal code indicates many areas of significance concern that this project is far from consistent with applicable policies and code, and simply cannot be approved in its current form. The big issue is impact on our irreplaceable visual resources. This project is still 450 feet long and very, very close to the maximum 35-foot height allowed within this development zone. It is quite simply "large", creating a wall. It unambiguously blocks views of the hills, as the applicant himself stated in the study session, and therein lies the problem. The document presented on screen contains excerpts from the land use plan and relevant municipal code sections, with text bolded and underlined for emphasis. It is neither a complete nor exhaustive exhibit of all sections of policy and code where the proposed project is not consistent regarding visual resources, but it is a significant list. In the study session, it was stated that the Planning Commission has some degree of discretion in interpreting and applying both policies and code. However, when you look at the sum total and the intent of the language of policies and code, I believe it is simply not possible to find a current iteration of this hotel to be consistent with those policies and code. Examples: LUP 9-12 requires protection of visual resources, including the hills. LUP 923C projects frame but not block views of visual resource areas. Code 1437035J requires harmonious transition between areas of different designated land uses. You can't do that if the largest structure in the downtown area is located here at the periphery of this planning zone. Code 1837, quote, "The specific purpose and intent of these visual resource protection standards are to, A) protect the scenic and visual qualities of coastal areas as a resource of public importance; B) ensure that new development is located so as to protect views to and along the ocean and scenic coastal areas." 1837037B, "Structures shall be situated and designed to protect any views of the ocean and scenic coastal areas." City documents specifically prominently and frequently use language of "shall" and "require" with respect to protection of visual resources. This is unambiguous language by design, and it limits the amount of discretion given to both Planning Commission and to staff. In the study session, AAC member Kikuchi very concisely summarized both the problem and presented the obvious solution to visual resource impacts here. Steve said, "I'm almost wondering if there's another solution that they should have looked at, such as possibly a couple of two-story buildings and one one-story building. In summary, the project is too big and tall for the site, creating significant impacts on visual resources inconsistent with city code and policies." I'm just about done. Regarding the project as currently presented, the northern three-story building has a ridge line of 33 feet 9 inches, which is actually higher than the ridge line of buildings presented in previous iterations, while the southern two-story building has a ridge line of 32 foot 2 inches, barely lower than that of the three-story section. This was also noted by Commissioner Polgar. If the two-story southern building was redesigned as a true two-story building of modest height, visual impact would be significantly reduced, at least for that portion of the project. I've used my allotted three minutes, so when I see you at your next meeting, I will use my time then to discuss site inundation during rain events and concerns about challenges with stormwater management on this site. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shore, for your well-documented comments. Are there other members of the public wish to comment to the Commission?
I'm not seeing anyone.
All right, I'll close that portion of public hearing and go to our first, our next item on the agenda, which is request for a major amendment to an approved coastal development permit at 795 Main Street. And I believe Scott Phillips will address the Commission.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
I'm gonna go ahead and, thank you, go ahead and give a quick, quick presentation on the proposal. Okay, as mentioned earlier, this, this is, the proposal is for a major amendment to a project that was recently approved by the Planning Commission. And the Commission reviewed this back in November and unanimously approved the project. And then shortly afterwards, the applicant approached staff and explained that some changes to the approval needed to take place in primarily converting the space that was approved for the new building to an outdoor retail garden nursery use. And the applicant still would like to move forward with converting the existing commercial building to residential with two units. And the amendment would require amending the approved coastal development permit, architectural review, and use permit. Revised plans were submitted and reviewed by the Architectural Advisory Committee on June 17th. And the AAC had some minor changes, suggestions related to the fencing and parking configuration. And those changes were made and plans were resubmitted. We did go to the AAC one last time and they did, they are recommending approval of the design of the amendment. And that's when we scheduled the Planning Commission meeting. Now, as far as noticing, the site's been posted three times. We posted it back when a CDP application was originally submitted, as well as for the meeting back in November, and then also for the meeting this evening. We also published a notice in the newspaper, as well as sent notices out to all the neighbors within 300 feet and 100 feet for the renters in the area. We didn't receive any feedback after the noticing for the major amendment. And this slide shows an aerial photograph of the site, which is located on the southern portion of the 700 block of Main Street, directly across the street from Kitty Fernandez Park. And as you can see, the site is partially developed with the commercial building. Now here's the proposed site plan and showing the outdoor retail area sort of on the left front. And then also the, I tried to emphasize the, where the new addition would take place to the existing building for the office space that would support the outdoor retail. And as you can see there, without the new building going in, there's ample parking to meet the demands of the two new residential units, as well as the commercial parking for the outdoor retail. This is landscape plan, which is very similar to the site plan. But you'll notice that the street trees, as well as the bicycle parking that were included with the previous approval are still on the plans. And that'll be a nice addition to, sort of an upgrade to the experience along Main Street. This slide shows the front elevation and rendering. And on the rendering, you can see in the back there where the new addition would take place. And exterior siding would be upgraded, similar to what was included on the approval back in November, as well as improvements to the entry, to the overhangs to the entry to the residential units, creating more of a residential feel to the, you know, the remodeled buildings. The main change compared to what was reviewed back in November, a low-lying fence has been added to the front of the building, and that was one of the suggestions of the AAC. The new fencing would be similar in style to the fencing for the retail area. And then on the flip side, the rear elevation, this slide shows the storage shed that would be, would sort of be upgraded with the new awning to support the retail area that would take place within, underneath a new trellis. And then side elevations, notice that the new siding for the existing building wraps around the entire building, which is important to give a complete look to the, you know, finished look to the upgraded building, as well as where the new double-sided monument sign would go for the business. And then included the gate detail on the gates and fencing, which would be powder coated in black. That also was a suggestion of the AAC. Kind of the main difference that you probably noticed in the packet, the conditions of approval have been revised. And the key one is that the condition requiring that the new building be constructed at the same time as the remodel has been removed, as well as conditions of approval that were specific to the new building. Those have all been removed from the conditions of approval attached to the resolution. We did add a condition of approval in relation to the sewer lateral that an easement would need to be recorded for the existing lateral prior to the issuance of the building permit for the remodel establishing the residential units or the sewer line extension similar to what was approved previously. So that's, that's kind of the big change as far as the conditions of approval. But certainly important for the Commission to understand that. Now some key considerations, you know, the Planning Commission is encouraged to evaluate the, you know, proposed major amendments, design compatibility with the site and surrounding area. And then, of course, outdoor retail, you know, similar to another project further north on Main Street that the Commission recently reviewed, we do have something in our code that requires the Commission to, so you know, support outdoor retail and determine whether or not that that's appropriate for the site. Now staff is recommending approval for the conversion of the, the new building, as well as the small addition, and then establishment of the outdoor retail. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. The owner of the property, as well as the architect, are both logged in this evening. They'd be happy to answer any questions also.
Thank you, Scott. Do Commissioners have clarifying questions for staff? Or for the applicant?
I do.
Vice Chair Polgar, please.
Yeah, my, I just had a question about the the sign. And I just wanted to, I didn't see where it was going to be, and one of the renderings, it kind of looked like it was in the sidewalk, but currently they have a nice sign, you know, and I'm assuming, I was assuming then that the sign will go in the same location where it currently is, but I just wanted to confirm that, because I didn't see in the drawings like where the sign would go, that's all.
Yes, it's, so at this point, the sign location is conceptual. Sign permit would be required once, you know, once it's decided exactly where the sign would go. But we're happy to take any suggestions and any feedback from the Commission on signage, so.
I had, and then one other clarifying question about the area that will be, I'm assuming that the entrance driveway, that's, that's now paid, that will be paid, it's not currently, right? And that will be?
Yes, that's correct. So what's proposed is asphalt, a new driveway in asphalt that would access the accessible parking space. the accessible parking space. And then that would, that would be, that would, that would be it as far as new hard surface. The rest would remain as gravel. So.
That, that's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chair Polgar. Commissioner Gorn, any clarifying questions? I'm sorry, did you say no?
I said, no, I don't have any.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Sorry. I, I don't have any. So I think we can proceed at this point to invite, uh, uh, comments from, from the public on this item. I'll open the public hearing if, if we have, uh, attendees who wish to comment.
Not seeing anyone.
Chair Reddick, just for the record, um, our applicant is here. They were, Jenna Smitty and our architect, I believe are both here. And I saw some hands up while, uh, staff was responding to clarifying questions, but maybe, maybe we work that out, but I'm just, I don't see their hands up now. I just want to make sure they have a chance if, if they wanted to address you.
Of course.
Andrew, and the architect, I will allow him.
Can you guys hear me okay?
I'll open the public hearing for this.
So, so the, just to kind of address the sign, there's about a, a s- existing six foot landscaped area behind the, um, the sidewalk. And that's where the new sign would most likely go somewhere in that area. The, the exact location, like Scott says, is kind of conceptual, but ideally it's in that, in that already landscaped area. And we're trying to minimize the damage to the existing succulents in that garden space. And that was all I had, just to clarify that.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for that. Any other members of the public wish to, um, comment on this item? Well, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And invite, uh, Commissioner deliberation. Vice Chair Polgar, please.
Um, I, I don't have a lot to say. I really, I like the, the project a great deal and, um, I, my questions were just truly clarifying. Um, I wasn't an issue in terms of, I just wanted to make sure that, there was one drawing that looked a little odd. So that's all, um, so that fully answered my questions. I think it's a great, uh, use for this, uh, spot. Uh, I think the succulents, uh, you know, it's a great, um, opportunity for this kind of businesses, outdoor retail. Um, so I, uh, fully support the project. I, and I like the, the look and feel and the, um, I think it's, it's really, uh, well done. So I didn't have anything to offer beyond that. So those are my thoughts.
That's fine. Well said. Commissioner Gorn, did you wish to?
Well, I just, yeah, I just, um, I don't see anything problematic in any of the changes. Everything looks pretty straightforward. And not so different to me.
Great. Well, I, I support staff's recommendation on this. I think that this, this project, um, especially with this amendment in the, uh, in the outdoor nursery area of very, very strongly supports the vision we have of making Main Street even more vibrant. Mixed use outdoor retail project like this. So I'm, I'm fully supportive of it. If there's no more discussion, a motion to approve the resolution at hand would, would be fitting.
I'll move that we approve the, the motion at hand.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Polgar?
Yes.
And Vice, I'm sorry, Chair Reddick.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Outstanding. The next item on our agenda is an application for a coastal development permit for the property at seven two seven Main Street. And, uh, Scott, I think you have the floor again, right?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chair, and, uh, appreciate the, uh, the introduction. This is a kind of a Main Street evening. So just kind of exciting. So I'll go ahead and, uh, give a presentation for this one as well. Okay, so this slide shows the, uh, the existing building, uh, with the, uh, the previous owner's truck out front, I think. And, um, the, the building was actually constructed back in nineteen oh three. And, uh, was used as a, a residence, uh, up until, in the early two thousands. And at that time, uh, the building was substantially modified and remodeled to include a, uh, an office space on the lower floor. And, uh, more of an apartment on the second floor. And, uh, up until recently, I was used in that way. They, they did make some, you know, some minor site improvements, uh, with this sort of the hooked driveway going into the back, creating some parking in the back there, uh, during the, the, the big remodel. Now, the current proposal includes a change of use of the, the existing office space. And what they would like to do is, uh, reduce the commercial space to allow for an additional residential unit on the ground floor. And then convert them, the remaining office space to a, uh, art gallery, commercial art space. And the permits required include a coastal development permit, architectural review, use permit for the additional residential unit as well as parking exception. And, uh, let's see, the, um, the initial step on this was that we, uh, at an early phase, maybe the, the week after we received this application, we presented the plans to our Architectural Advisory Committee. And that was on May twentieth. And, um, the A C did make some suggestions as far as, uh, mostly around site design. They suggested, uh, straightening out the driveway and, uh, creating a safer access to the back. That was the, the biggest change. Uh, but they, they had other, uh, mostly site improvements that were suggested as well. The, the changes were made, uh, quite quickly by the applicant. And we brought it back to the Architectural Advisory Committee on August nineteenth. The A C, uh, just had, uh, I think it was a minor change to, uh, the tree species. And they did recommend, uh, approval of the design of the proposal to the planning commission. And that's when we, uh, scheduled this hearing. Now, as far as noticing, we did post the site when the application was submitted. As well as, uh, posting the site for, uh, the meeting this evening. And, um, published in a, a, uh, notice in the newspaper and sent out notices to all the neighbors within three hundred feet, as well as renters within a hundred feet. I did receive some emails, uh, after the notices went out, uh, four emails. All supportive of the project, uh, which is, uh, kind of nice. It seems like we, we get a lot of, uh, concerns as opposed to compliments. So that was, um, that was kind of nice. Now this slide shows the, uh, aerial photograph of the site and, uh, which is, uh, basically in between, uh, Cora's and, um, Mona Vista Lane. It's, uh, mid block on, uh, seven, the seven hundred block. Similar to seven ninety five Main Street, uh, the sewer lateral actually goes back to Johnston Street. So you'll notice that the, uh, condition of approval in relation to, uh, uh, requiring the sewer lateral easement recording uh, is included with this project as well. So, um, certainly an interesting thing that I, uh, didn't realize at first that, uh, you know, the sewer line for this portion of Main Street is on Johnston Street. This slide shows the existing condition, uh, the, uh, basic existing elevations. The interesting thing is the, uh, the first floor plan that you'll see that that's all office space right now. And then, uh, the proposal is to, um, that's where most of the work will take place as far as in, inside the building. Now, a lot will take place, uh, to the actual site itself too. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, uh, the driveway, as you can see, will be straightened out, uh, new hard surface, uh, previous pavers will be utilized for the new hard surface. The existing driveway apron will need to be removed and replaced with concrete sidewalk. And the apron moved further north, uh, which is going to require basically replacing the entire sidewalk. Reconfiguration of the steps accessing the, the residential unit on the second floor will take place. And, uh, the A C and the, the project architects work together to, uh, redesign the, the steps there to, to sort of create a, um, distinction between the commercial access on the north side and the residential on the south side. New business signage will be added as well as landscaping, uh, A D M, ADA improvements will take place. As well as low lying fencing along the front. Electric vehicle charger in the back, rainwater storage tanks along the, the sort of the southwestern corner. As well as a complete new solar system. Now here's the, uh, proposed first floor plan. And as you can see, the, the new, um, residential unit would go in here where the office space currently exists. As well as the art gallery and ADA accessible bathroom for the, uh, the art gallery. Second floor, this is, uh, this will, will be remodeled, which is currently residential. And then here the front and rear elevations, uh, you'll see that, um, one of the big changes is that, uh, for the, the art gallery itself, uh, larger windows and, uh, glass entry door will be installed to, uh, sort of showcase the new art from, you know, Main Street and the sidewalk. Also a new park bench and bicycle parking would be installed out front. Here the side elevations, the, uh, the blue canisters there indicate the, uh, the new rainwater storage tanks. As well as the, uh, trash receptacle area in the back, uh, which totally makes sense. Similar to seven ninety five, they're interested in, uh, doing a, uh, double sided, um, monument sign out front. Now some key considerations for the planning commission, uh, design compatibility, uh, the A C did provide valuable feedback on the design. And the applicant receptively made those changes and, uh, worked closely with the A C. On the second review by the, they see, the, uh, the project was, uh, they see recommended approval of the, of the design. Now, as far as our, uh, conformance with our downtown specific plan. Throughout the specific plan, there's mention of mixed use. Uh, it's kind of a recurring theme in the, the specific plan. As well as visitor serving, uh, both of these, uh, I think the, the project is in compliance with. As far as our land use plan and zoning, uh, the re- remodel and change of use is also in stand substantial conformance with our land use plan. Including but not limited to mixed use and commercial visitor serving policies in chapter two. So, uh, it's been fun to kind of delve into our new land use plan and lean on some of our new policies. Now, as far as use compatibility, that's one thing the planning commission is, you know, needs to take a look at is, you know, it's, uh, you know, this, uh, is, you know, in South of Cora's, uh, residential is a conditional use, uh, therefore a use permits required. But we do have policy to support that. And one last thing, as, as far as off street parking and mixed use, um, we did take a closer look at the, uh, the two thousand nine approvals. And there was a parking exception that was granted for the major remodel back then. And more recently, our, uh, as the planning commission knows, we've, our downtown parking standards have changed. Back in two thousand nine, seven spaces were required for the one residential unit and office space. Whereas today with the two units in a smaller art gallery, only six spaces are required. So as you can see, the, um, the proposal would result in a reduction in the nonconformance as far as parking. So I think that helps with the, uh, you know, justifying the, the requested parking exception. In conclusion, we recommended the, uh, planning commission, uh, welcome to ask clarifying questions, hold a public hearing. Planning commission discussion in action. And we are recommending approval of this project, uh, the, uh, the property owner as well as the architect are both logged in this evening. And, um, they did provide me with a few slides. I think they do want to give a few words on this project.
Well, thank you, Scott. Um, are there any clarifying questions from commissioners, uh, for staff, uh, Commissioner Gorn?
Hey Scott, um, how many parking spaces are there onsite, not off, not a, not the street parking?
How many parking? Technically, there are, there are only two parking spaces, existing and proposed.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other clarifying questions, uh, Vice Chair Polgar?
And this, my question may be something that the, um, applicant might be able to, uh, explain. I was interested in finding out a little bit more about the, um, the options that were explored to try to, to get an, another parking space on site. And kind of what, what the, uh, rationale behind what, what was tried and what, um, why it wasn't feasible.
Yes, I can, I can certainly, uh, clarify a little bit and then maybe the architect can jump in if I, uh, miss something. Let's see, I'll go ahead and go back to the site plan here. So initially, the plans that were originally submitted included three spaces in the back here. And what we asked for were, uh, to clarify the, the turning movements of, of vehicles. Especially accessing the most eastern space. And there was concern about particularly the, the most eastern, eastern space and how difficult it was to access that it really wasn't a functional parking space. And that's when we suggested, uh, reducing it back to two spaces. Oh. No?
No.
Can everybody see the, uh, the site plan? Okay?
No, I'm not seeing your screen.
Oh, excuse me. Sorry.
There we go.
Sorry about that. Okay, let me, let me take a step back. When the plans were originally submitted, the site plan included three spaces in the back. We asked for clarification on the turning movements for, uh, vehicles, in particular for accessing the most eastern space. And it was unclear whether or not that's, that was actually a functional space. And the, uh, when the plans were revised, uh, they were submitted with two spaces. Now I did have some discussions with the, uh, the architect that, uh, in all likelihood, they will probably end up parking in tandem a little bit with, with the, uh, you know, once, you know, they're actually moved in. So there's, um, but functionally only two spaces are accessible. But functionally, only two spaces are accessible.
And through the chair, just to follow up on on that, so in that easternmost area to the left, to the east of the, I guess, the the gray area, what is that gray indicate that kind of pattern?
Yeah, so what they would like to do is just provide a little buffer between the parking space and the property line in decomposed granite. So.
Those are all my question.
Okay. Commissioner Gorn?
I'm sorry, I don't think I heard an answer to the first question. Commission Polgar asked, are there some other plans for for parking outside of this space? What's the? No, I didn't do that.
We certainly explored, you know, the, you know, tandem or, you know, fitting a third space in there, but it just. They weren't functional. So. So that's, that's when we, we sort of landed on what the existing condition is, and and that's two spaces, so.
And Scott, was, was it your opinion that the the applicant and or the architect might have something to add a value on this?
Yes, I I would say so. They may have some some clarifying, at least what their vision is for the property and their thoughts and, you know, process on, you know. Where we've, you know, what we have on the plans now, so.
Okay, well, I'll open the public hearing for them if commissioners have no further clarifying questions. All right, open the public hearing.
Okay, and first we have is Crystal Lynn.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is Crystal Lynn, the President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. And I just wanted to put in my support, like those other four emails for this wonderful project. As Scott mentioned, I think it aligns really, really well with the vision of the mixed use. And it also helps us bring some much needed commercial activity down to that end of the streets. Since it's kind of right where things start taper tapering off. It is really hard to get. People to continue to meander down that way. And I think an art gallery is such a wonderful addition to that side of the street. So just really in support of of this project in all of its magnificent glory. And also wanted to note that it's an addition of a great tenant to the street in that Mariana has come to many, many meetings already. She's very familiar with the downtown association. And although that's not in the purview of the planning, I just wanted to make note that it's just a great addition all the way around. And although parking is always a little bit of a hubbub, you know, thankfully, Main Street is well. Well equipped with its own parking, so I hope that that does not create a wall, a barrier for entry on this project. So again, Chamber of Commerce super supports this. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal Lynn.
Next, we have Fred Hayer, who's the architect.
Welcome, Mr. Hayer.
Hi, how are you guys? I'm wondering.
Thank you. How are you?
I'm I'm well, thank you. Thank you for hearing this project. Can I share my screen by any chance?
Um, I will move you over. Just hang tight. You should be able to now.
Is it appropriate for for me, for Mariana, to say a few words now, or do you guys still want to keep talking about parking for a little bit?
Oh, I think you could go ahead now.
Okay, great. I wish that I had, I love this funky building and it is where it is on the lot. And I wish I had an unlimited budget to pick it up and move it or to dig underground. I can tell you that we closed escrow in January and four really motivated parkers can get back there with just talking to each other. And so we do often have four cars in the backyard. But I actually think it's kind of cool that visitors to the gallery will park on the street. Because I really am excited that they're going to get out of their cars and walk up and down Main Street. And no one's going to come to Main Street just to see my gallery. They're going to be making a day of it. So I I'm glad that no one will sneak back into that parking lot. I think it really is great for for all of Main Street to to ask visitors to the gallery to park on the street. But so that's my two cents on parking, but I do I do want to tell you a little about the business to sort of explain like who's coming and how what their intention will be when they visit. First, I want to say thank you to Scott and the whole planning department staff and city staff and members of the A D C who helped us get to this point. Despite supply chain issues for building materials, there's a chance that if we are approved tonight, we will actually be able to open the gallery by Memorial Day next summer and benefit from foot traffic. My Mariana Start Gallery public programs will include, actually, Scott, are you back on your slideshow now?
I can, I can screenshot again.
Okay. So this will be a sort of a traditional fine art gallery where I'm I'm representing artists. Coastal and Bay Area artists whose practice is in dialogue with contemporary fine art movements and evokes the spirit of the West Coast. The gallery is open to the public, no admission fees. I'll have six two month rotating exhibitions per year. Six opening receptions per year, six or more artist curator talks per year. Collaborations with local organizations for different cultural events. I'm going to hold the events on in the mid and late afternoon on weekends so that visitors can come early or stay late to shop and dine in town. I will schedule events off cycle from big Half Moon Bay cultural festivities. And as Chris Lynn mentioned, I'm already an active member of the Coastside Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Association. There's a picture of the funky building in all its glory. And then the next slide is a picture of the of the neighborhood. It really is a very businessy neighborhood. We've got Sacrilege Brewery right across the street and their outdoor bar, Tri Cities, Tri Counties Bank. The I D S Portuguese Society. There's, you know, there's that, this series of three buildings that's all professional doctors offices. So yes, we're next to a like a multi unit residential building, but really, this is a, this is a true commercial street. And so I I and and there's always parking. Right now, it's it's two hour parking and it's there, it's empty and it's pretty much empty in the picture there, too. Whenever I, whenever Google took that picture. So anyway, so that that's my sort of, I wanted you to hear from me and how that how I'm going to be using the space. And then I know Fred has some words about how he's transformed what were his plans for the building that are that are great to hear.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you. Sure, I think it's Fred's turn.
Next slide, please. So our proposal is to divide the ground floor office space into the of the existing misuse building into an art gallery and second residential unit. The existing upper level unit is being renovated and extensive site improvements are being made. There's no expansion of the footprint or increase in floor area proposed. And the building will remain a mix of B and R three occupancies. Next slide, please. The new accessible ramp and landscaping in the front create an inviting pedestrian entry for the art gallery. While also providing a much needed delineation between the commercial and residential uses. The additional dwelling unit is an amenity for the larger community, providing smart increased density in the downtown district. The reorientation of the curb cut and straightening of the driveway approach makes accessing the building safer for both vehicles and pedestrians. And the proposed art gallery and additional residential unit will add vitality and energy to the south end of the commercial district. A boon for all surrounding businesses in the community at large. And the rest of the slides are images of the drawings that you already saw in Scott's presentation. So I have no further comments, but I'm happy to answer questions about the design.
Thank you for that. Are are there any other members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
I'm saying then.
Commissioner Gorn, do you have a question for the for the architect?
No, I don't.
Okay. Well, if there are no questions for the applicant or the architect, I'll close the public hearing. Closed. And bring us to deliberations by the commission on this item.
I'll raise my hand now.
Yes, please.
Hi. So this is, this looks wonderful. Like the whole idea of an art gallery in that spot. And especially combined with the residential. Looks wonderful, just terrific. I do have concerns about parking. I think that is an issue. I think, I think an art gallery means a lot of events. A lot of people arriving all at once. I think that it's, it's a little specious to say, hey, you know, we'll always have parking because we have parking now. As a planning commission, I think you got to plan for the future. And I just think that I, you know, to say that. Hey, we only had two before, and now we have two now. Doesn't really address the new use of this building. So I love the idea, but I think you have to get back to the parking. There was, there's a great little comment in there that's, you know, you said, look. We've had four motivated parkers get into those two spots. And that says to me, there is demand for parking in that area. If you have to be motivated to squeeze four people in there. And I think once you open up a gallery, you're going to be more motivated to squeeze more people. And so I I don't, you know, I I don't have a problem with the proposal at all. I think it's wonderful. But I just feel like you gotta, you gotta address that issue, saying that all your events will be off cycle. With the other events in the city, that's just, that just won't last. Because it just doesn't make business sense to do that. And you will eventually combine your events with the city's events. It should. You should combine your events with the city's events. It's, it just makes sense. So you just got to, to me, I just would need to hear something that addresses that issue a little bit better. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gorn. Vice Chair Polger?
Well, I fully agree. I I really like this in terms of the the project and and I think it's a great design and, you know, the gallery is fantastic. I, I don't know that I have as much concern about the the parking in part because I do think that a lot of the the traffic will be foot traffic. If, you know, if people are wandering by, that's, that's how I do think. And then when there are these big events in town, I mean, parking is already, I kind of feel like you're already, you know, saturated. So I'm kind of, I'm not necessarily thinking that this is the thing that's causing that. So I guess I wasn't, I'm, I guess my concern around it is that you now have, so I wasn't necessarily as concerned about parking with respect to the gallery traffic. In part, just because I think that a lot of it will end up being foot traffic, kind of wandering around from further north on Main Street mainly is what I think will happen. Um, but I I am concerned in that it's, it's already been necessary to get, like Commissioner Gorn pointed out, the comment about how squeezing in the four spaces, parking cars in. And if I'm understanding this correctly, this is adding another residential, which I'm very excited about. And and so I'm torn a bit, but I I think that I don't, I don't think that there's a lot of options. I mean, I do think that a third parking space fits there, frankly. I I think that that's, that's certainly to me, looking at that, I think that's what I I think that what the architect spoke about, that that will happen. People will park there. So my concern is around the kind of the the parking that the residents will need. And but I also don't necessarily see another option. Because I don't imagine, like, there's not even a space to put parking, for instance, another parking space out front for, you know. And I wouldn't think that's inappropriate, kind of to have parking out front in a building along Main Street like this. So I I don't really know what to say. I I'm not sure exactly how they would fit in more than just one more parking space, so have a total of three. And and in to a certain extent. If the, in the past, it's, it's almost like essentially then there's nothing that could ever happen here. if the, in the past, it's, it's almost like essentially then there's nothing that could ever happen here other than what's here. And so I'm, I'm not sure that I'm okay with that. And also, even though I said that, that I, you know, that they're already having to squeeze us in, clearly somehow it works. And so I don't want to see a space go unrealized in a really good way for, for something that I feel like is not a reasonable request, because otherwise I can't see how they do it other than literally taking the building and kind of picking it up and moving it over. I don't think that's feasible. So, so I have clearly some mixed thoughts on that. And I'm certainly open to hearing further discussion, but those are, that's where I'm coming from. It's not, I'm, I don't know that I'm quite as concerned as Commissioner Goran about the, like, I, I, I think I'm, you know, more towards supporting it as is recognizing the reality of how parking will be used and back. But I definitely would be interested to hear further thought and discussion about this.
Well, thank you, Vice Chair Polgar. Yeah, I find myself agreeing with, with both my colleagues. Commissioner Goran is right on to express concerns about the, the parking exemption. And but as Vice Chair Polgar points out, if, if the letter of the law were to be enforced there, how could you have an art gallery or, or anything other than the, the current status of the building? And there's a lot of appeal in this, this project, again, given the, the way that it supports the LUP's vision of a mixed-use visitor-serving, a more vibrant Main Street. And I, I'm, I'm sure probably all of us are, but I'm, I'm certainly familiar with that stretch of Main Street. And I've, I've been down there at the, at, you know, dinner rush hour on Friday, Saturday evenings. And I realize this is anecd, I'm offering anecdotal experience in defense of this, but, but yeah, that's a, that is, in my experience, one of the easiest places, that stretch of Main Street, to find street parking. And again, as Vice Chair Polgar said, it would, if you were really to require the letter of the law and no parking exemption, how, how could a business even take place there? So I'm, I'm quite motivated to support staff's recommendations on, on this proposal and to support the project. Commissioner Goran?
Well, I actually agree with you about, you know, I, I don't think it's a deal breaker. I do think that you, they may want to try a little harder to address it. Because I, you know, it's not a problem now. Maybe, I don't know if you've looked at IDES and talked to them about using some of their space for, you know, when there's events or something. I, I, I don't see it as a major problem, because I like this project a lot, and I would want this project to go forward. I just, you know, we grant, we grant parking exemptions, you know, like they're, like they're gumballs. And I'm, I'm just reluctant, you know, torn a little about that issue. And in particular with, you know, ideally, there's going to be a lot more use here. Like this is going to, this is going to really open up this area, which is great. And, you know, so far, the businesses that I've visited in that area are very, you know, are smaller. And, you know, it's like piano lessons and, you know, out to dinner. And so that's nice. And there's never been a problem. I just, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna propose a new, new use of, of an area, both with new residential and a new type of business, I feel like just saying, well, and we'd like a parking exemption, is a little much. So I don't, I'm sure staff has been over this a bunch and that the planners have been over it a bunch. I just think they should look at it a little bit more. That's all. Thanks.
I understand. No, that, that's, that's very well said. My, my perspective on this business of, um, the actions of the planning commission trying to make real the, the vision that we have for the city and for the vibrancy of Main Street. It, it, you don't get that for free in every case. Sometimes compromises must be, must be sought. Bridget tells me that the applicant would like to speak again, so unless commissioners object to that, I'm gonna open the public hearing again briefly to, to allow that.
And to the chair, when, after that, staff would like to share a few more thoughts about this with, with the commission, if that would be helpful.
Of course.
Hi, this is Fred, the architect, again. I, I, we, we did try really hard to fit more parking in there, and we manipulated the accessibility ramp and shut, moved that further west and moved the whole parking further west so that we could fit that third spot in. And, you know, I, I'll just reiterate that I believe that that's a valid parking space and that we should, we should be able to use it as a parking space. So I, 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 for, for what it's worth, I just wanted to throw that out there.
All right. Thank you. And staff would like to speak to this?
We would. We appreciate the commission's concern, and I understand that it does feel like you're looking at a lot of parking exceptions. We would like to acknowledge, in this case, each one has a story. In this case, unfortunately, there, there may have been an opportunity way back when, I think it was in 2009, when the, the building was lifted to build the office space underneath. Unfortunately, you know, that was a, that was a time when the building could have been moved a bit forward on the lot and maybe opened up some more room in the back. I don't know why that didn't happen. I don't know if it was to acknowledge a setback line, which was, which is important on the 700 block of Main Street. There's actually some potential historic district qualities to a portion of the street. Obviously, this particular property has had a lot of alterations over, over time, and yet it still retains heritage character, and so the placement on the lot may have been something that they were really trying to retain. It is okay for the applicant, the property owner, and the user of the gallery, or folks who are living in, in the, the residence, is the existing one and the potential new one that you're looking at tonight, to park in that, on third space that your, your persnickety staff can't count. We can't count it because it doesn't meet the parking standard specifically with regards to maneuverability and possibly even dimensions. Usually, when we have a space next to a hard surface, like the fence, we would, we would need to eat out of foot into the width, so there's room for door swing, for example. So there's, there's a lot of little details, and yet, if you had a small car, I'm, I'm sure you can, you can make it work. We also can't really count it because we, we have to honor the ADA space. And the ADA space requirements have increased the amount of room that is required for, as you heard the architect speak to, in particular here, the ramping and making, making the path of travel between off-loading the vehicle to the ramp completely conform. And that is, that is the priority for our review of a parking plan like this, which has so few spaces. So, um, we just wanted to share that with you. We did look at a lot of things with the applicant. I do think they'll probably manage to put a little bit more back there. But do you remember these two things? And we, we hope that they were presented well enough in the staff report, but just for the good of the group, we'll, we'll repeat a little bit of it. The existing condition has a significant parking exception that was granted in 2009, and that's what set this up. And the office, the parking demand for the office use on the ground floor is considered to be equivalent to the gallery. And the proposed new parking demand, the, the parking demand associated with the proposed new uses from day-to-day operations should be substantially similar or slightly less. We hear what you're saying in that events, and you've added a condition about larger events that that staff could monitor and check in and see, see how things are looking in, in that span of the 700 block. So there's some things that you could do associated with this. We also note that there's a really good off-peeking of the uses. The residential, as Scott noted in the staff report, tends to peak in the, the evening and it, obviously overnight, relative to the gallery, which is more of a afternoon peak, probably. So you, you, you could, I, you know, we'd, we'd be happy to add a condition about monitoring if that's something that you're interested in. We'd be really concerned, though, about not honoring the old parking exceptions. This, this is a really unusual case, when it came to you without a floor area. And conversions of space to uses that are permitted or conditionally permitted in the district. So it's, it's, it's a really interesting case study. And we're always happy to dive into parking. We know it's important. We know it's very sensitive to the block. We are happy to see that we didn't have neighbors too concerned about it. That, that's, that's interesting. And this has been noticed quite a few times. So just more perspective for your discussion, and we're here to support whatever you decide to do tonight.
Well, thank you, Jill. That's, that's very helpful. Commissioner Goran?
Personally, I don't, I don't think that conditions like that are really required. I would be toward approving this project. I do. And to say that it's equivalent with office space is, is just not, is not right. You know, another exception is kind of order. Do, do do a lot of exceptions, but I, I think this area needs an anchor like this, you know, needs, needs this kind of project. So I would be saying yes.
It's well said. I like your, I like your term anchor for this neighborhood.
I, I would agree, or, or I would then propose a motion that we approve the, the proposal as resolution. I, I don't, sorry, I don't have it up in front of me, or the number, what we're supposed to approve, but.
The resolution at hand?
At hand. There we go.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I guess that's me.
If you choose.
I will second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Goran?
Yes.
Vice Chair Polgar?
Yes.
And Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Very good. More good work done today. Jill, are you, are you still feeling like you completed your director's report?
I do. Was there anything else you wanted to hear about?
No, I just wanted to be sure that in the, in the flurry of the opening minutes, that you had had enough time to do everything you wanted to.
I think so. The, the only other thing that you'll be hearing more about soon, City Council has requested a study session on housing, and we are planning to do that in November. We will update you as the date firms up and the scope of that agenda. And we are also bringing on board a housing consultant, and I'm really excited to have that happening, and we'll, we'll have opportunities for you to, to make them at some point in time.
That's great. That's exciting. Thank you. Do commissioners have any communications to communicate? David, I think you're saying no.
Oh, yeah.
I don't. So, so in that case, a motion to adjourn would be welcome.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Goran?
Yes, please.
Vice Chair Polgar? Chair Riddick?
Hi. In Rick's honor.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye. Thank you, guys.
Be well.
Same here.